All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Wichita City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. We will, the Chair recognized Pastor Rebecca Moore from the First United Methodist Church for invocation. We would ask that if you are willing and able to please stand for the invocation and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray together. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, we have gathered this day to tend to the work of the city. We ask for your blessing on all people who lead this community and on each and every person present in thought, word, and deed. May the work of this day be pleasing to you. We ask that you will find ways to build bridges that unite divisions, that the words spoken are heard with an open ear, and that the welfare of this city is a priority. We are grateful for the many wonderful aspects of Wichita. It is home for many, it is opportunity for many, and it is connection for many. So God, as the agenda of this city council proceeds, might you be present constantly calling us to seek love for all and to be a city that has hope for a bright future where all people are valued. Grant these leaders, these servants of the city, wisdom and courage to know and do what is good, right, and true. May we always be guided by a spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all names that we hold sacred in each of our hearts. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just kidding. The next thing on the agenda is actually approval of the minutes. My apologies, I was jumping right into proclamation. So, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 11th, 2020.
Is there, has every member had a chance to review the minutes? Is there discussion or proposed amendments to the minutes? See none? In that case, I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
The minutes have been motioned for approval and seconded. The clerk will open the roll. Members cast their vote. With seven yays to zero nays, the approval of the minutes passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Proclamations and awards.
I'd like to call up Sean Miller for receiving a proclamation for National Engineers Week. All right, so I'm going to read the proclamation. A proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas engineers use their scientific skills and specialized knowledge in a creative and innovative way to fulfill society's needs and help solve major technological challenges of our time, from design efficiency building systems to rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters. And whereas engineering has been called the invisible or stealth profession because everything around us and things we use every day have been engineered in some way, yet we may not see the engineers behind the scene or know much about the engineering. And whereas, founded in 1951, National Engineers Week, or EWeek in parentheses, is dedicated to ensuring a diverse and well-educated future engineering workforce by increasing understanding of and interest in engineering and technological careers. And whereas, EWeek is a formal coalition of more than 70 engineering, education, and cultural societies with more than 50 corporations and government agencies dedicated to raising public awareness of engineers' positive contributions of quality of life. And whereas, Asher sets standards for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning and refrigeration industry. And in addition to certifying the educating people in the industry all across the country. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, along with Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim February 17th through the 23rd, 2020 as National Engineers Week. In Wichita, we urge all citizens to join me in recognition, in recognizing the important contribution of engineers to our daily lives. Thanks, guys. Do you give me a hand?
Brandon, good to see you. Congratulations, I haven't seen you since the election. There you go. Jeff, good to see you again, members of the council. And we'll just briefly say, I mean, the proclamation already said, what we do is very unglamorous work. You know, we take 25% to 30% of somebody's budget and make it disappear into the deep recesses of the building or plane or, and basically if you can see, feel, or hear anything that we've done, we didn't do our job right. So, so this week, we, myself, Sean Miller, and Drew Rose, P.E., Manny Villarria, Villaria, member of the Society of Hispanic Professionals, and we have Illumination Professionals represented, and I'm Dal Carmichael, President of the Ashray Group, which is basically heating and air conditioning engineers, we'll skip the rest of it. So we are very grateful for the opportunity to have the proclamation made and the recognition that, that we normally wouldn't otherwise get. So thank you very much. Thanks for your attention. Have a great morning.
All right, now I get to have the honor of recognizing with Service Awards, two members of our, I don't think Bob's one of them though. Oh, Bob's coming, okay. The, two members of our team. The first one is, I'd like to call Mr. Joe Pajer to come to the front. And it's likely that I messed up the last name, and I apologize ahead of time because I actually don't do that on purpose. So Joe began working with the city in 1977. He began as a Emergency Resource System Analyst. His other city titles over the years have included Industrial Analyst, Housing Development and Energy Coordinator, and Natural Resource Coordinator. Joe oversees nearly 4,400 miles of sewer and water lines and 5,000 miles of streets, including 1,500 miles of emergency routes, and that must be plowed and treated during snow and icy storms. He oversees 450 employees. You could say that he's always on call and a steady voice in times of weather emergencies. Outside of work, Joe has served three terms as a member of the Groundwater Management District Number Two Board of Directors, served on the State of Kansas Solid Waste Grants Advisory Committee for eight terms through appointments by five different governors, appointment by the Cedric County to nine terms as a member of the Solid Waste Management Committee, appointed to the city's Storm Water Advisory Board for three terms, appointment to which, excuse me, Cedric County's Storm Water Advisory Board, and service as a founding board member of the Kansas Sunflower Chapter of the Solid Waste Association of America. Joe, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council members. Forty years, five months, and a couple of weeks, it's been a long and interesting ride. I've certainly enjoyed the journey, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve the community.
So Joe, in recognition of your service, we would like to present you with both a Service Award and also a coin from the City of Wichita. And also a coin.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, I'd like to ask Kerry Beals to come down, please. Kerry Beals, welcome. And now we have another dedicated Public Works employee. Kerry is a Division Supervisor of Equipment Maintenance and has been with the city since 1983. His work has helped the department ensure timely removal of snow and ice and help maintain and grow our fleet of vehicles. His work is one of the many positions that operates behind the scenes, keeping us safe and able to get around Wichita. Kerry keeps us as a city, as a city Kerry keeps us moving. When you see a snow remover, street sweeper, or other city vehicle, it's Kerry that's ensuring that it's working and keeping our city clean and safe. Kerry, would you like to say a few words?
First, let me say thank you to the council for your few minutes. I know it's a very busy time up here. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And that's not just me that took care of everything down, there was a whole team of us, and that's what this whole thing is about, is a team, and working for the taxpayers. So thank you, taxpayers who's watching today. I appreciate you letting me do that. So, doors closed, it's been 37 years with part-time when I walked in, and like Joe, I appreciate the time and thank you very much.
Kerry, I have a Disregarded Service Award from the City of Wichita, along with a coin in recognition of our appreciation of your 36 years of work in service.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk.
Alan Trenary, why won't young people stay in Wichita?
Good morning, sir, and welcome to the public agenda.
My name is Alan Trenary. I live at 1461 North Burns Street. I'm the Officer-at-Large in the North Riverside Neighborhood Association. I came, I lived in Colorado and came back to Wichita after having some issues arise around care I was providing for a Vietnam veteran in his home, caring for his cannabis grow. And he didn't want to compensate me, and some various things took place, and I ended up being arrested. And I had several felonies on me when the arrest took place, and I was looking at, you know, going to prison. And I stood my ground and told my side of the story and managed to get it down to where I had only one felony and, you know, some other various things going on. This is my companion, Jackie Edwards. Her birthday was last Sunday. Tomorrow is the anniversary of her death. She acquired an antibiotic-resistant bacteria in the recovery room after having surgery for cancer which she contracted, smoking Marlboro and hard packs and various things. I feel that a lot of the reason why young people leave is because we're not promoting pride in the community enough. And then there's meddling in personal, people's personal business, the, I was not here during the years when the reproductive issues were being protested so vigorously around here. My mother was a personal friend of George Tillers when she was growing up, so she became very upset at what happened with him. The getting, messing with people's personal lives is a huge issue for why people may not want to stay here. Industrial hemp is an amazing commodity and resource. I personally eat a lot of hemp seed, a lot of hemp protein powder, and have reduced my reliance on meat and meat byproducts by doing this. I was heavily involved in the, in the process of getting medical cannabis into Colorado. And I feel a lot of the reason why we're having problems is because Oklahoma and Colorado were eating our lunch, because we rely on civil asset forfeiture to fund a lot of our police activities, and it stifles, you know, people are leaving because they don't like having their lives meddled with. And I really, you know, the Century 2 is a major issue with me on this, because I feel is, it's on all of our, it's symbolized in so many things around the city, is, it's in all of our, it's on the news all the time. The meeting last week with the veterans and the home, I'm going to be the attendant for my friend Freddie Lee Harrison when he goes to Washington DC to be acknowledged for his service. He was involved in the Battle of the La Drang Valley. He was one of those that lived, one of the 19. And I did a lot of what he called guerrilla veteran services with him before I came back here. I would go with him down to the hospital, and somebody would tell him, oh, we got a guy living under the bridge, or we got a guy out over there. I would go with him to try to talk the veteran out, and inevitably, you know, resulted in all kinds of profanity flying towards my friend. And this is, the industrial hemp, to me, is the reason why it competes with oil. Anything you can do with oil, you can do with industrial hemp, and it cleans the soil instead of polluting it. My close friend, I knew Ken Gorman, I was involved in the initial process of getting medical marijuana into Colorado. And I feel that so much of this, you know, CBD is found everywhere, and I was told that when the hemp plants are processed into the CBD oil, that it's required that they should be destroyed to prevent them from being diverted into the underground market for marijuana, which is a tremendous waste, because if you use the hemp cellulose and that byproduct nicks it in to make concrete with it, like use it instead of sand and concrete, it makes a lightweight building material that's fire resistant and very strong. I know my time is up, gonna step down, and if anybody has any comments about what I have to say, other than that.
Not on the list. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to address this.
Of course. Madam Clerk.
Russell Pataki, Century 2.
Morning, Russell.
Good morning. My name is Ross Pataki. I'm with a 7814 East Gilbert, and I'm here to talk about Century 2, some alternatives and priorities. I hear it's, the proposal is, I've heard numbers approaching a billion dollars for the entire Century 2 redo, and I think that's crazy. I mean, we have a lot of potholes in the street, we got kids walking along busy streets to school with no sidewalks, and we need, I have nothing against putting money into downtown and developing it, but we need a little balance, and we need to be putting money into neighborhoods. And out of this billion dollars, I can tell you how to make Century 2 a destination for about 5% to 10% of that, and we can put the rest of it into the neighborhoods. The problem with Century 2, it's a great building, it still looks contemporary, but the sound stinks in there. It's, it's been that way ever since I came here. I won't go there to a concert because it's, it isn't worth it. The last concert I did go to, I was in the cheap seats, and I heard this horrendous echo that really interfered my ability to hear the concert that I went to here. What we need in Century 2 is to do acoustic or room conditioning, and then we need to get top-of-the-line sound systems in each and every room in Century 2. This is all it's going to take, you know, I'm sure you can do this for a lot less than $100 million, which would leave us $900 million to put into neighborhoods, to build sidewalks, to pave streets, to develop them, you know, let's put the developers together fixing neighborhoods in Wichita instead of just, you know, making downtown, you know, putting it all into downtown. It just isn't right. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I think that concludes the public agenda. Madam Clerk.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 10.
Is there a discussion on the Consent Agenda Items? If not, I will make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 10.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussions? See none? Clerk, close, open the rolls, members cast their vote. The result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Quarterly financial report for the year ended December 31st, 2019.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the City Council. Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Today, I'd like to present to you the fourth quarter report for 2019. The fourth quarter report includes unaudited activity for 2019. We'll take that information and we'll compare it to the 2019 revised budget, which would have been approved by council in August. And then we'll identify any trends or any issues that we think could impact us going forward into 2020. We'll spend a little bit more time today on the, on this quarterly report, it's probably the most important one of the four that we do, because we're reviewing activity for the entire year. So some of the key points I want to talk about today, the general fund did in fact have a slight surplus in 2019, which is pretty consistent with what we expected and what we presented in the third quarter report about three months ago. Water and sewer utility funds both had lower revenues than what we budgeted, but they also had expenditure levels that were below budget. And finally, the Gulf Fund continues to face significant challenges. We've talked about that every quarter for the last few quarterly reports, and I'll go into a little bit more depth today about it, but suffice to say, the Gulf Fund continues to face challenges. So let's look at the general fund first. General fund revenues last year were about 5.8 million under budget. Most of that occurred in two areas, franchise fees and charges for services. Franchise fees, as you know, are largely weather dependent, and that's what impacted those last year. I would also point out that both of these revenue streams are at least partially offset by reductions in expenditures. Obviously, if utility usage is lower, that's going to impact our franchise fees, but it's also going to save the city on, on utility costs. A lot of the charges for services are for activities the city provides, so if we collect less revenue, that means that we also have reductions on the expenditure side. Finally, looking at revenues last year, probably the best thing that I can report is that our tax revenues, our revenues in our portfolio generated from taxes actually slightly overperformed, which is a good sign going forward, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. That's property tax, sales tax, gas tax, motor vehicle tax, and even special alcohol tax. So let's look at the expenditure side. As you know, our top priority is public safety, and you can see that from this graphic here, well over one-half of all our general fund expenditures go towards public safety. You can see that we underspent last year by about $7 million. Nearly all of that was in our other programs, virtually none of that was in public safety, again reflective of the fact that public safety is in fact our top priority. As I noted earlier, a lot of that under expenditure was in utilities area, a lot of it was in activities on which we generate revenues. And then the final thing I'd point out about expenditures is, a lot of that is due to under expenditures in personal services and salaries due to challenges in hiring staff last year. So here's where the general fund ended up last year. Again, we expected to be balanced at about $250 million, and in fact, we wound up with a surplus of about $1.3 million last year. So the key takeaway is, again, slight surplus, public safety is our priority, tax revenues performed well. So I want to take a couple minutes to look at reserves. We always like to look at those at year end. This chart shows our general fund reserve levels in both nominal terms and in percentage of expenditure terms. You can see that our reserves have grown for the past 10 or 11 years or so. Probably the line on there that's most important, though, is the percent of expenditures. That's what we use, that's what rating agencies are going to use, that's what we're going to use to benchmark ourselves, and that's what we're going to use to compare ourselves to peer communities. But again, you can see also on this chart that our policy level is to have a minimum of 10% of reserves with a target of 15%. We would expect to end last year just slightly under our target of 15%. So why are reserves important? And we've shared this slide at times in the past, and it's a little bit busy, and I apologize for that, but I've snipped out little pieces of ratings reports from our rating agencies. That is one significant reason why reserves are important. Rating agencies, as you know, review the city's creditworthiness, which can impact the interest rates that we pay on city debt. You can see the first one, that's from Moody's. They said that our stable outlook continues to reflect the city's consistent general fund reserve position. The second area there is from the research report that Moody's did here a month or so ago, and they talked about how both the city and the county maintain healthy general fund reserves. And the last two are from Standard and Poor's. This is from our rating, ratings last fall. Standard and Poor's noted that our strong budgetary performance coupled with slight operating surpluses in the general fund was a positive, and they pointed out that we have strong budgetary flexibility with an available fund balance of around 16%. I'll point out, Standard and Poor's uses a slightly different metric, that's how they get 16%, but the concept is the same. So why are reserves important? They provide flexibility. They're also very important because our rating agencies monitor them very, very closely. And finally, I'd point out here that best practice by GFPA, which is our peer professional organization, is about two months, which corresponds to about 17% of reserves, so we're pretty close to that right now. Let's dive into the Gulf Fund a little bit. Gulf Fund revenues last year totaled about $3.8 million. That was down from 2018, about 6%. On the expenditure side, the expenditures were about $4.1 million, again, down from 2018. As you can see, if we had expenditures of 4.1 and revenues of 3.8, they operated at a deficit last year. I'm rounding here a little bit, but that deficit was $230,000 dollars last year. They continue to face declining rounds, and they have very little cash. For example, in 2019, the cash ending balance was $740. That is, that's, that's pretty thin for a fund the size of the Gulf Fund. I'd also point out that that cash balance was only possible because the general fund subsidized the Gulf Fund last year to the tune of about $461,000. You may recall that was included in the adopted budget. Now, maybe on a more positive note, as you know, the Gulf Fund implemented a new pass strategy earlier this year. That strategy, based on a quick analysis that I did of some data that I got from the Gulf system, seems to be retaining our current pass holders, which is a positive sign, and we're converting those pass holders to a monthly subscription model. Although I'd point out, only about a third of the pass holders round, or passes have expired, so we have a limited dataset, but so far, we expired, so we have a limited dataset, but so far, we appear to be capturing most of those. So the takeaway is on the golf fund, we monitor the golf fund very carefully, very closely, monthly, weekly, daily in some cases. In 2020, looking forward, I think it's possible, or perhaps even probable, that we may have to look towards internal loans or short-term deferral of internal charges in order for the golf fund to be solvent. Solvency, I think, will depend on continuing to control expenditures, increasing rounds from non-pass players who tend to pay a higher amount per round, and increasing and capturing concession and cart sales from the folks that we do convert to the monthly subscription model. Talk about water and sewer funds briefly. As I noted, revenues were down last year in the water utility. They were down from 2018 experience and below what we expected in 2019. However, expenditures were also under budget in 2019 and were consistent with the prior year. On the sewer side, revenues were actually up a little bit from last year, but did underperform what we had budgeted. But again, on expenditures, they were consistent with last year and under budget in 2019. So let's look at our city debt. Again, we present this information every quarter, and this pie chart should look familiar to you. This shows our approximate $1 billion city debt portfolio. Takeaway here is that the dark blue pie slice there at about the 1 o'clock position, GEO at Large, that represents the portion of our city debt portfolio that is paid back with property tax revenue. In other words, only about 7% of our debt portfolio was paid back directly with property tax revenue. About half of our debt is revenue debt. The light blue piece over there from about the 7 o'clock to the 12 o'clock position, that's paid back by our water and sewer utility primarily, and you can also see that we have GEO debt that is covered by airport and water. We have local sales tax debt that's funded primarily through our share of the countywide sales tax, and then we have special assessment debt, which is funded by special assessments on property tax, or homeowners. I wanted to point out the, I think it's the green slice there, just to the left of the GEO at Large slice, the other slice. The other slice is about 27 million. That includes about $25 million worth of TIF debt. I wanted to briefly touch upon that. That TIF debt, as you know, is debt that we issue, and then we recover through the increment that we collect on our TIFs. And typically on that debt, we generate deficits in the early years of the TIF, and then as valuation on the TIF comes and the increment increases, and then debt ultimately retires, we use those surpluses in the latter years to pay off the remainder of that debt. Wanted to point out two TIFs right now. The East Bank TIF, and there's a page in the quarterly report that demonstrates this. The East Bank now has a cumulative deficit, I think, of approaching a little over $3 million. Again, that's consistent with our model where they tend to underperform as the increment is growing, and then they tend to pay off at the end whenever the debt is retired, and we still have a couple extra years on the, on collecting the increment. The other one is Douglas and Hillside. I would point that out. Similar story there. The valuation has not been recorded yet by the county, so we have not generated the increment, so we have generated a little bit of an initial deficit there, but as that increment is recognized through the valuation by the county, we'll continue to collect more increment, and that TIF should be in better shape in the future. Let me talk briefly about the debt limit. We include this slide every quarter, and we've talked about this a little bit in the past. State of Kansas has a statute that limits municipal debt to 30% of our valuation. Incidentally, this valuation includes motor vehicle, which is why that $4 billion is a little higher than what you may recall our property tax assessed valuation base is. But takeaway basically is that our debt limit, according to state statute, is $1.2 billion. Now, they exempt a variety of different kinds of debt, so the city debt actually applicable to the state statutory limit is $341 million. In other words, we're about $880 million below the state debt limit. Or we, if we want to look at it on a percentage basis, we are using about 28% of the city debt limit. Probably more important to the city as far as measuring our debt capacity is this chart, which again, you're probably familiar with because we show this every year during the CIP. This chart shows the percent of our property tax revenue that we're going to spend for debt service. The 67% line there, which is the light blue line, is what city council has determined is the maximum that we want to spend for debt service, and you can see by the black line that we expect to be below that throughout the planning period, although we do expect to increase over the next several years. I think we ended 2019 at about 44% of that benchmark. Just briefly, what to expect in 2020 on our debt activity. We will be issuing notes here in a couple weeks, so you'll see that on your agenda. Notes, as you know, are ways that we temporarily finance project costs, and then ultimately we'll either bond those or take them out with cash. But there will be a note sale coming up in a couple weeks, and then we typically issue bonds in the fall, so we'll probably have a GEO at Large issue, a special assessment issue, and possibly a local sales tax issue later on this fall. Water and sewer utility bonds are typically issued on not quite of a scheduled basis, but we do that when we have a need, so it's certainly possible that we could have a water and sewer debt issuance at some point throughout the year. So let's take all that information and just briefly look forward a little bit. So I'll finish up with that. Again, tax revenue performed well in 19. That's a very good thing. Our property taxes and our sales taxes performed well, and I would also point out, 2020, we built that budget on relatively moderate assumptions, so not only did our revenues perform well last year, but we budgeted them to perform moderately in 2020. So we should be relatively well positioned, I think, in those areas for 2020. But we fundamentally have the same problem that we've always had, that we continue to talk about, and that is fundamentally, our organic revenue growth tends to be lower than our organic expenditure growth, which means fundamentally that we have a structure that's going to lead us to structural deficits of some sort, and we talked about that last year during our retreats. Finally, I want to talk about the impact of an economic slowdown and what that might do to what we expect to happen in the future. We're certainly not forecasting a slowdown. That's beyond our scope. Having said that, I think it's important to recognize what we know from our past experience will happen when we have a slowdown. The first impact that we'll see will be on sales tax. Sales tax does have a lag. It has to be contributed to the state, and then the state distributes it to the county, and then the county distributes it to the city. So there is a little bit of a lag, but that is probably where we'll see the first impact of any slowdown. Typically, what happens is the growth rate on sales tax revenue slows and eventually flatlines typically for about 12 to 18 months. Again, we have not seen that, but that's what we would expect to happen when, if and when we enter a slowdown. The next thing that will happen is motor vehicle taxes will slow down, sometimes flatten out. Motor vehicle taxes are based on the amount of vehicles purchased and the value of those purchases, so obviously, if people purchase less new vehicles, that tends to impact our motor vehicle revenue. And there's a little bit of a lag there, but we would expect to see that flatten out. By the way, order of magnitude, sales tax is about $30 million, motor vehicle is about $15 million. Finally, probably the most significant change is in property taxes. There is a lag in property taxes. For example, 2020 valuation is already set by the county, and in fact, the county is in the process of establishing the 2021 valuation. So any slowdown most likely would start affecting us by 2022. But what we know will happen, based on past experiences, that property valuation tends to decline and stay flat, usually for a year or two. As you may recall, during the Great Recession, property valuation was flat for four years, which was pretty unprecedented, but we do know that property valuation will fall and probably stay flat for at least a year or two. Order of magnitude there in the general fund, property valuation generates about $80 million. So in summary, I apologize for the length today, but we performed well in 2020. I think we're positioned fairly well in the future with moderate, with moderate expansion in our revenues. Any slowdown will have immediate and longer-term impacts on our revenues, though, something to be aware of. Takeaway on the golf fund, it continues to be challenged, and additional adjustments may possibly be necessary in 2020, but we will monitor that carefully and closely in conjunction with golf staff. I'd also point out that the quarterly is available on the city's website at www.wichita.gov. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I will start off with a question. So our general fund is 1 point, I mean, 7.1 million under budget as of today. Is that correct?
That was as of 2019, sir. Last year, we underperformed on the expenditure side. We underspent by about $7 million last year, December 31st.
Mark, to clarify, the net position of the city was actually the 1.3, right?
Sorry, sir. Yes, sir.
And I'm getting to that. Where 1 point, I mean, 7.1 million was under the budget as of this quarterly report. In addition, we had the 1.3 million surplus. That brings us to 8.4 million in money we didn't count on. Is that an accurate reading?
Yeah, we underspent by 7.1, but we undercollected on the revenue side as well, so that's what generated the 1.3 million surplus. So to answer your question, is we actually did 1.3 better than we expected to on a net basis.
I was going to, I didn't know if those could add together, so thanks for clarifying that. I was going to say, it seems like a lot of money. Chair recognizes Councilmember Blue Bog.
Thank you, Mayor. Just trying to get some clarification here. We're $880 million from our debt limit?
Yes, sir.
Do we have it on our legislative platform to where we're discussing the debt ceiling, or is that something different?
I don't believe so, sir. We've never been concerned about state debt limit. We've never been close to the state debt limit.
Okay, okay.
No, there's something regarding the operating budget, but not debt.
Okay, okay, okay. Just one clarification. And the other thing was, on public safety, I see we had a budget of 139.2, and it looks like we came in at 138.6. So we had a $600,000 surplus. Is that because we have plenty of police officers and firefighters that we don't need? I'm just curious why we have a surplus there.
We actually underspent, and most of that was in the fire service. The police department spent almost exactly the amount that they were budgeted. Fire department underspent slightly. As you know, the fire staffing model tends to cause some variation in staffing costs, and last year, they actually underspent. There's been prior years where they've overspent slightly.
So where does that $600,000 go?
That falls into our general fund reserves.
Which will be reprogrammed by the council when we do the upcoming budget. And we'll talk about that during the retreat.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Clendenna.
Hey, Mark. How you doing? Thanks for the update. You had mentioned that there's a possibility of a structural deficit in the future. Just wanted to clarify, we recognize that, and we're taking safeguards against it. We're not at that point, just for clarification for the public.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then, we know that the current layoffs at Spirit are going to affect us one way or the other, probably in sales tax, the arena of sales tax. Do you have an estimate on how that could affect this upcoming budget?
Well, that's definitely a challenge. My estimate, if I had to make an estimate, would be if sales tax goes flat in 2020, that would cost the city Wichita roughly $900,000 in revenue. You know, who knows what the impact will be, or if there will be an impact.
Sure.
But if I had to estimate, I'd say we could lose $900,000 in sales tax this year.
So I'll put down officially your spitball on that. Thanks.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you and Bob and finance staff for the work you do in keeping us in good standing. My only question was the surplus, the 1.3 million. Is that the same funds that we used to make those investments in efficiency last year, or is this a new surplus going into this year?
This is a new surplus. What we showed you last year were, over the last two years, if I remember correctly, we've had lean initiatives that have saved us about $1 million annually. So you could say, if you wanted to, that that $1 million is showing up every year as savings for us.
Awesome, okay. Thank you.
I have a question about golf. My understanding is the pass, the switching from a pass system to a monthly membership model, the theory behind that is that it's coming directly out of a bank account, so it's easier to collect, but also, the price for yearly membership has gone down compared to the pass in hopes that will grow our base of golfers. And you said that so far, since initiating, that you've done, the golf program has done a good job holding on to its current members. Have they seen growth as well, or is that something we're still working on?
I just looked at some cursory data, but I can tell you that the retention rate was about 100%. In other words, there was, they have roughly 1,000 pass holders, most of whom are seniors. I think they had about 277 that I saw that expired in the, since August, and if I, my memory is correct, I think they sold 290 passes, so slightly more than what had expired. Again, that's a small sample size, but generally, the trend looks favorable, and it looks like the model may be working as they expected to.
Okay. Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you, sir. Bring discussion out to the public? Public comments? See none. Bring discussion back into the bench? Is there discussion or questions on this item? See none. I will make a recommendation, excuse me, I will make a motion to recommend, to recommend an action, receiving file the quarterly financial report for the year ended December 31st, 2019. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? See none. Clerk will open the rolls. Members will cast a vote. With the pass, with the results of seven yays to zero nays, the measure does pass. Madam Clerk?
L W Clap Park Master Plan Project and Design Services.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. How you doing?
Wonderful.
Director Troy Hellman, Parks and Recreation. The item that I have for you today is in regards to Clap Master, Clap Park Master Plan. A little bit of background, last year in July, we had closed Clap Golf Course. That was after doing a sustainability review back in 2018, showing that the slowing down of golfers going to our golf courses. During that time, just before the closure, we did a community engagement process to re-envision the park and do a transformation of the park. We worked with staff in, from, and we also worked with WSU Public Policy Management Center, and we hosted, I think somewhere in the neighborhood, about 15 public meetings, working with DABS, working with stakeholders, and getting some ideas of what we wanted to do to transform and re-envision Clap Golf Course into a park. This transformation committee identified several amenities that they wanted in this park, which included items such as a dog park, disc golf course, amphitheater, additional programming, ponds, trails, an all-purpose playground, and food trucks, and maybe some other special event areas. This was the foundation that we used to move forward with a request for proposal to do a master plan of the park. In 2020 CIP, we did place dollars in there funding for a master plan, and we advertised for a request for proposals based on that committee's recommendations. Some companies submitted proposals, and four were interviewed. We had an eight-member committee that comprised of members from the CMO, park, law, finance, and park board to review the proposals. Confluence was selected for the project. There was a lot of competition in this review of the proposals. We had proposals from all over the country, and it was very interesting to see some of the other proposals that came through, but Confluence had a lot of background and information in regards to transforming golf courses into a park. They have an all-star team, which includes some local members of their team. Gmail V, Gredman Group, GSI, and Baughman Group are all part of that team. So a quick analysis of what they are planning to do for this master plan, they're going to be doing a kickoff meeting, they'll be doing some data gathering, data gathering, mapping, research, doing environmental reviews, searching opportunities for the creek, doing workshops with staff and with the community, doing some very detailed park concept development. They'll also be doing park development cost estimates, and will be doing presentations to staff and to the council through this process. Again, as I mentioned, Confluence is very familiar with Wichita, and this idea of transforming golf courses into a park. The adopted CIP included $312,500 for a master plan for Clap, but we did... But we did negotiate with Confluence for a price of $206,000 for the initial master plan development. There'll still be a few other items that will be in that, which include some mapping as well as some surveying. So those will be some additional costs later on down the road. Recommendations is to approve the consultant selection and the project initiation, approve the contract, adopt the bonding resolution and authorize any necessary signatures. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions. Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, just to be clear. So you're asking us to approve 312 right now, but the contract was for 206.
That's correct.
With the remaining 106 to come back to us for approval later? Or would that just be considered as part of this 312?
So I think there's some additional fees that I mentioned in regards to surveying and some mapping. And I think those are some incidental costs that we will have to do eventually. But if there's any other major costs or expenses, we'd be coming back.
Right, because anything over 50,000 would have to come back to us for approval. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Clendenin.
Hey, Troy. Have we gotten any indication from the, boy, my brain just stopped working. From our consultant, that's a hard word to say these days, you know.
It feels like a Monday, doesn't it?
Have we gotten any indication from our consultant how they intend to go about the public engagement portion of their, the master planning process?
Well, we've done a lot of work already, as you know. I think we've done a lot of public engagement. I think they want to get some more feedback and that's going to be a series of meetings. We haven't discussed how many that would be, but I think it's whatever necessary to get the job done. But I think they also want to work with staff and council and the park board to really highlight the important things that are coming out from the public in regards to what can happen at the park.
Okay, but there will be at least one or two possible public meetings where people at least be able to give their last minute feedback on what they'd like to see?
Most definitely. I would expect at least two, if not more.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thanks, Troy. Great job to you and your team. And thank you for everyone involved from city staff and the community. This is just more of a comment, but I was really excited when I read the analysis that there were seven proposals. Sometimes when we put an RFP out, we only get a couple. So it sounds like it was a really robust promotion process of this RFP. So thank you for putting the extra time and effort for that.
This is a great project and across the country, a lot of folks are looking at Wichita, all the things that we're doing. I think we're getting a lot of attention from folks in regards to what is our vision and the things that we're trying to get done. So I think all seven of these folks really recognize the things that we're trying to get done here in Wichita. And I think that's why we have so many focused, eyes focused on the things that we're doing. So I think that's a credit to our vision.
Great job.
Sir, I just want to follow up on Councilmember Clendenin's concerns. The, I'm from South Wichita where Clap was. And when I attended neighbor association meetings over the summer, people felt that they didn't have an opportunity to truly voice their opinions. And I just want to kind of echo the comments of my colleague about, and you've confirmed, at least two public hearings. Do we know, will those be after six o'clock when people get out of work in that area? Or are those, can you explain on how people, how the outreach efforts will be to ensure that the community accepts?
Well, just as we did, working with Councilmember Clendenin, we did meetings after hours. We did them near or around Clap Golf Course. We worked with all the neighborhoods. We actually reached out to each one of the neighborhood associations and had meetings at each one of the neighborhood associations. So we attended somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 16 meetings. We did online surveys. We did online public engagement. I think we did a public meeting online. So we got tons and tons of feedback. But with that same philosophy, we are going to reach those folks after hours in areas where they're really concentrated with interest of this site. So yeah, we want to definitely reach those folks.
Okay, and the current status of the site where Clap used to be, has Clap been dismantled at this point or what's the current status of Clap?
We've removed all the irrigation. We've actually added some other things in regards to changing some of the grass on the greens and tees. We've removed a lot of the sand from all of the sand traps. So we've also did some work on the trees. But this summer, we'll definitely be doing a lot more mowing and clearing some more spaces to have more open spaces. But we are really waiting for the master plan to really help us design what we're going to be doing for the park. So it doesn't look like a golf course anymore. We have folks still using the park quite a bit. The trails are still out there in regards to the golf cart trails. And so a lot of folks are biking out there. I've done it several times with a large group. We're also having a lot of activity with the disc golf. We had the disc golf baskets up. And so I think it was the day after we closed it, we had a lot of disc golfers out there and we're getting a lot of positive feedback with that. We're doing some programming. Last summer, we did a movie out there. This coming summer, we're going to be doing some disc golf tournaments. We're going to be having a couple of movies out there. We're also doing, probably do some flag football out there, just whatever we can. So we can definitely have that space active.
So just for the people who are concerned with golf and Clap in particular, at this point, it's not practical to just reopen golf at Clap. It's, that part of it has been dismantled.
One of the main reasons why we closed it was because of the lack of infrastructure care. And so we would have to go back and redo the irrigation system. There's bridges that are out. We have several trails that need to be redone. So to go back and reopen it as a golf course, we'd have to put significant dollars back in from the golf fund. And as you saw earlier, the golf fund is not in good shape right now.
Further questions from the council? Thank you, Troy. We'll open up to public, to comments from the public. See none. We'll bring it, discussion back to the bench. More discussion or concerns? See none. The chair recognizes Councilmember Clendenin of District Three for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, I do want to say, I received a comment, actually I was at a neighborhood meeting and one of the neighbors that lives across from the old Clap Park came up to me and I thought I was just going to get him for something and, because he came up so animated. And he told me that the park looks better maintained now than it ever has, even as a golf course. So the neighbors across the street are, that live across the street are very appreciative of all the care that you're giving the green space. So I want to thank you and appreciate your staff for doing that. I want to thank the council for consider this, considering this. I think we have a huge opportunity to do something special down in this part of town. And again, Troy, I want to thank you for your vision and helping get all the public engagement that we have on this. I'm going to move that we take staff's recommended action, adopt the resolution, approve the budget, approve the vendor selection, approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures.
Motion has been made. The mayor will second. Any discussion on the motion, see none. Close discussion and members may cast their vote. With the result of seven yeas to zero nays, the item passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Adoption of franchise agreement ordinance for Black Hills Kansas Gas Utility Company LLC.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. Jennifer McGonaghy, City Attorney. The item before you is the renewal of a franchise fee agreement with the city and Black Hills Kansas Gas Utility Company LLC doing business as Black Hills Energy. This company is based in South Dakota and does business in approximately eight states. It's in 20 counties in Kansas and has about 100,000, over 100,000 customers. They do business in Wichita and have hundreds of miles of transmission and distribution lines. So they are in the city's right-of-way and that's why we have a franchise agreement with them. As I said, this is a renewal. The existing or the old franchise agreement expired in 2018 and we have negotiated a new agreement. Under state law, we have authority to regulate the right-of-way. And some of the key points of this agreement include a fee, a term of 20 years. It is effective retroactively to January 1st of this year. And it is similar to other franchise agreements we have in that it has protections for the city's right-of-way. Any improvements of the city must be repaired or replaced if any changes are made, any damage is done. Those are upon Black Hills Energy to conduct. This new fee structure is consistent with what we've done with the previous gas utility, Kansas Gas. We had an agreement with recently and this is to maintain consistency. So the new fee structure simplifies the billing and payment process for both parties. The 6.1817% fee is based upon only the percentage of grocery receipts. It represents what was previously billed separately as grocery receipts and then permit fees that were assessed and calculated monthly. This bundles them into just a fee based on grocery receipts. And so the previous curb and dirt cut fees are done away with and this is all based on the 6.1817%. The estimated annual revenue is 1,000, 1,696,080. This is a projected annual increase of revenue of about, over $300,000 to the general fund. I would add that Black Hills has been an excellent partner to work with, been responsive and cooperative and we appreciate their staff in this process. With that, we would note that the franchise agreement will be codified as an ordinance if you approve it. And with that, we'd approve, recommend that you approve the first reading of this franchise ordinance for Black Hills Energy and authorize the necessary signatures. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions from the bench? See none. And I believe as a first read, it's not appropriate to ask questions from the public. Is that correct?
That's possible. If anybody would have questions, you can.
Oh, they do. At our first read, we skipped that. Questions from the public? See none. Bring discussion back to the bench. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Jennifer, just to clarify, I know it's on the green sheet, but says the city has the right to review and approve facilities placed in the right-of-way. So that means they would show us what this stuff looks like before they put it in or we have an opportunity to see it?
They work with public works facilities, public works staff and there's still a permitting process in place like the existing. So that is correct. They do provide that information in an application process.
Further questions or comments from the bench? See none. Thank you. Well, it seems that this isn't in any one person's district. So I will make a motion for the recommended action of approving the first read of the franchise ordinance for Black Hills and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none. Clerk will open the roll as members will cast their votes. With the result of seven yeas to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Clemmons Aviation LLC used in lease agreement Colonel James Jabara Airport.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Victor White, Director of Airports. Our item before you today is a request from Dwayne Clemmons and Clemmons Aviation LLC to obtain a lease agreement for a plot of land at Jabara Airport upon which to conduct a specialty aviation service business. Mr. Clemmons is the owner and operator of Stearman Field in Benton for background. At Stearman, he operates a fixed base operation with full aircraft fuel sales, charter, maintenance, management, pilot services, hangar sales and residential estates, airpark. Now, Stearman is the fastest-growing general aviation airport in the state of Kansas with more than 219-based aircraft. And the airport is viewed by KDOT's Aviation Division as a model of success for other airports in the state for economic development activities. Clemmons operates a fleet of 21 aircraft with a variety of types of jets and fixed, or piston aircraft as well. They are the largest beach jet operator in the country with over 14 aircraft. They have the largest general aviation flight department in the state of Kansas with over 30 pilots. And they have 24 investors from Wichita area that have shares in their jet management program. Mr. Clemmons proposes to construct two 18,000 square foot hangars with support office areas. They will build an aircraft ramp adjacent to the hangars. They'll provide storage, maintenance, pilots and other services for their owned leased or managed aircraft. And it'll also provide FAR Regulation Part 135 charter services for hire. Key business terms of the lease agreement are a 30-year lease term, a leasehold size of approximately 100,000 square foot. Initial lease rate for the site will be at 23 cents per square foot per year, which will produce an annual lease revenue to the airport authority of about $23,000. The lease rate will escalate 1% per year. And then in year, contract year 26, there will be facility rent charged for the hangars at the then-current mark, fair market value. And I would like to point out, there's a typo that we found just now in the agenda report that says year 2026 is supposed to say contract year 26. All construction costs for this project will be paid by Clemmons, including the hangars, the aircraft ramp, vehicle parking, utilities, et cetera. It's a triple net lease, so they're responsible for all the terms of payment for maintenance of the facility. They may choose to obtain airport special facilities revenue bonds, financing and order to qualify for sales tax exemption on certain construction costs. This aerial photograph of the airport shows you sort of the location. It's highlighted in red, about the middle of the airport. Here's a zoomed-in picture to show the approximate lease site south of existing hangar that Midwest Corporate Aviation has at the north end. And then south of this, this is not in this photo, excuse me, but they, Midwest Corporate has built two new hangars at the south of this little red box. This will be the lease diagram. This proposal was reviewed and also the financial and business terms of the lease were unanimously approved by the Wichita Airport Advisory Board at their February 2nd meeting. And they recommended approval by the airport authority. So it's staff's recommendation that the airport authority approve this use and lease agreement and authorize the necessary signatures. I'll be happy to stand for any questions. Mr. Clemmons is here. He has a representative that I believe would like to make a few comments to you.
Questions to staff? See none. Thank you. We'll open up to questions from the public. So just feel free to make your way down if you are someone from the public who would like to speak. When you reach the podium, please tell us your name and your address for the record. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. My name's Chris McQuillan. I practice at Kleenaw Osterman Law Firm. And I'm here today to speak briefly on behalf of our client, Dwayne Clemmons and Clemmons Aviation LLC. Very briefly, because what is before you is the limited question of approval of the agreement between Wichita Airport Authority or the city and, and my client for the, for the lease and construction of a hangar, not to conduct fixed base operator operations, but simply to operate a managed aircraft, a Part 135 operation, which simply is a charter operation where the owners of managed aircraft from this facility would be chartered to the public, but again, not a fixed base operation. It will purchase, the operation will purchase fuel from other, another vendor, another operator at, at the, at the airport. The anticipation is, is that there will be tens of millions of dollars of aircraft that will be hangered and managed from, from the facility. And there's no reason to expect that this will be anything other than phenomenally successful based upon my client's proven, proven, proven track, track record. There, to give some history, which some of us may or may not be aware of. Originally, I believe that this is, has been a wine that's been aging for, for almost three years. And we're kind of getting to the point where the wine's going to go sour. This first started out as a proposal for Clemmons Aviation LLC. This first started out as a proposal for Clemmons Aviation to construct and conduct a fixed base operation. And we have a constituency that had some issues with that. And during this process, he's not scaled it back, but changed the business focus of his operation in the hopes of bringing everyone, everyone together for approval. And you have competent staff, city attorneys, Magana's phenomenal legal department has reviewed this inside and out, I believe. And that I think it's time for us to bring this before you and ask for final approval of this, of this part, the, the lease and building on this parcel seven. There's no restrictive covenant that prevents this. And FAA regulations generally, generally, as you know, encourage competition, encourage positive, positive development, and, and discourage, if not prohibit, any type of agreement or arrangement that places a stranglehold on competition and, and development. But I want to emphasize, in this instance, this is not going to be a fixed base operator. This is a, this is a Part 135 charter operation on some level and, and operate privately-owned, leased, and fractionally-shared business jets and other aircraft. You may hear from other constituents on this about, in, in particular, the folks that operate out there, MCA. And we have been in negotiations to try to come to an arrangement to, to other pieces of the puzzle. But, but this piece of the puzzle adds to parcel seven is independent of that. My client is requesting to go forward. That development needs to start. The longer we wait, the, the less advantageous it will be to my client. It will be roadblocks. It will be, at some point in time, the plans just wear out. Like I said, the, the wine goes sour. So this is, this step is in the best interest, we believe, of, of the community, best interest in the development of, of the airport operations. And we ask you to, to approve the recommendation and allow us to go forward and get started because there's no reason not to. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain them.
Questions? See none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mayor Whipple, my name's Charles Whitmack on behalf of Midwest Corporate Aviation, 3560 North Webb Road, Wichita, Kansas, 67226. Mayor, before I begin, if I may, just very briefly, take a moment. We think this is a good deal for the city. It just needs to be done in the right way. Before I explain that further, I'd like to take a moment to just recognize. Mr. Clemmons is our colleague, our friend. We'd like to recognize his father passed away on Friday and give him our formal condolences. It's always awkward to be talking about business matters in the context of personal family grief. That's something I feel very strongly about, and I'm sorry for the timing, and you have our formal condolences.
Of course.
Mayor, we're here today because there is a little issue here. We think this is a good deal for the city, but it's not being done in the right way. The reason it's not being done in the right way is the two parcels that you're being asked to turn over to Clemmons Aviation have previously been promised to Midwest Corporate Aviation. It's a little awkward for us because this morning, because of that promise, we had to file a lawsuit about this matter in the local district court. My understanding is that's now been served on the city officials. What makes that litigation awkward is that there really isn't a dispute between any of us. We think the interest of the city is the same as the interest of Midwest Corporation Aviation, which is also the same as the interest of Clemmons Aviation. The problem here is one of how this process has unfolded. So if you give me just a minute, I'll, I'll take you back a few steps. A moment ago, you heard that this has been underway for about three years. I think maybe closer to two and a half years. Clemmons, pardon me, Midwest Corporate Aviation has been working at Jabara for about 36 years now. About two and a half years ago, they reached out to the city to see if they could continue their development of the parcel known as parcel seven, the one you just saw the photograph of. Your Director of Airports came back and said, "We've received two simultaneous proposals." When that happens, we have to issue a request for proposal. That happened. Midwest Corporate Aviation responded and was then told by the Director of Airports they made the only response. They were told they were awarded the RFP. They were then presented with lease agreements for up to 30 years, which encouraged them and required them to invest about $8 million in this property, about $4 million in hangars, about $2 million in lease payments, and another $4 million to come on additional improvements. And then they started out doing that. They did many, many things as part of this understanding that they had that they'd been promised this opportunity. A few months into that arrangement, there was a surprising development, which was where Clemmons Aviation announced that they were building a second FBO at Jabara Airport. The reason that was a problem was two things. First of all, it wasn't consistent with the master plan. Second of all, it wasn't consistent with the RFP process. Third, it was destroying the value of the promise that Midwest Corporate Aviation had been given by the Director of Airports that they had the opportunity to develop this land. And of greatest concern was that it was apparent that this conversation had been taking place for some time. There'd been two different channels. There'd been a public process that Midwest Corporate Aviation was forced to pursue, and then there'd been a separate process that was frankly just a conversation among friends. It's fun to do business with our friends. We want to do business with our friends. And that works great in business. It doesn't work great with the city because the city is at its best when it pursues its objectives consistent with its planning documents through a public process, through transactions that occur at arm's length. And it became a concern of Midwest Corporate Aviation that there were two tracks here, one that was a track among friends and one that was a track for the public. So Midwest Corporate Aviation began to raise their concerns about this. And we reached out to many of you at that time with a draft of the petition outlining what we thought had happened. But because we feel that all the interests here are aligned, at the same time we began that conversation with all of you, we also began a conversation with Clemmons Aviation and Dwayne and Julie to figure out how can we all work together to achieve this shared interest. And that conversation has been actually very fruitful. And I'm happy to report, I think we're very, very close to reaching the agreement. So today, the decision for you is not a yes or no decision. Today, the decision is simply to just table this. There's a couple of reasons you need to do that. The first is because the agenda report that you've received is incomplete, and it fails to recognize the fact that there is active litigation pending on this issue right now. The litigation that was filed this morning is number 2020 CV 00356. And what that litigation is doing is trying to help protect the city's interest and protect the city's interest in respect to two things, that the planning documents will be followed, that the RFP process will remain consistent, that the promises made by the Director of Airports will be honored, and that negotiations with the city will continue to happen at arm's length. The reason that's important is not because that's just how city governance should work. It's also important because this is an area that's governed by the FAA. And as you just heard, the FAA gets very concerned when the city gives a special process to one party at the exclusion of another. And that, that has happened here, mayor and council members. There have been two separate processes. So I think if you table this moment, table this motion for the moment, it'll give you the opportunity to check in with your legal counsel on the impact of the litigation. As I said, I think all these parties are in agreement on what the next steps are. I think we're very, very close to having that finalized. And I think by the time you have the opportunity to take this up for a vote again, we'll be able to come to you with the information that the litigation has been resolved, the parties have reached an agreement, and the interests of the, the three stakeholders here are aligned.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. One quick question. So you spoke about the RFP.
Councilmember, if I could interrupt you. I'm hearing impaired, and it's a little hard for me to hear, so.
So, so a quick question. You mentioned the RFP process and conversations and the fact that you all bid. Did any of that kind of guarantee you would be the only operator there and there would be no competition?
It didn't, councilmember. Thank you for that question. What happened at that time, and there's a little irony here. What happened was Midwest Corporate Aviation has been working at Jabara for a long time, developing the airport gradually. They reached out to the Director of Airports and asked to begin negotiating agreement to continue that development. The Director of Airports responded correctly, saying that there's two parties that are interested in that parcel. My understanding is based on the advice of legal counsel, he then said the appropriate next step is to issue an RFP. So it became a public process at that point, and that was for the development of the land that this motion today is regarding. Now, after that, the Director of Airports came back and said, "You were the only submission in response to that RFP." There's a dispute between the parties on whether or not he said you're awarded the rights of the RFP, but that was certainly Midwest Corporate Aviation's understanding. They understood that they were awarded those rights. What happened next was very important. They acted in reliance on that conversation. They signed a 30-year agreement for the land. They signed a 10-year renewal for the fuel farm. They built two $2-million hangars. They spent $350,000 updating the terminal. They had lots of activities in reliance on that promise. So there was no guarantee of exclusivity. And we don't ever claim any right to any exclusive development. We just claim that the development should be consistent with the master plan. And the irony there, just very quickly, is that now we're back to that same piece of land. And there's still two people that want to develop it. Midwest Corporate Aviation would like to develop it, and Clemmons Aviation would like to develop it. So before, when that happened, there was an RFP. Now you're being asked to do this unilaterally.
So counsel, counselor, you stated in your opening that this has been a 2.5-year process. But today was the day you filed a, a motion to delay further. Has our legal counsel had a chance to review that motion before they came and made the recommendation today?
They have not, Your Honor. And I apologize for the timing of that. This state of events has evolved a lot over the course of the last two and a half years. There've been negotiations that have been ongoing. And I agree with you. Today, there's nothing urgent about this. Anytime a party comes to you and they says there's something urgent taking place that involves a 30-year lease or involves long-term bonds, you have to question the urgency. There's nothing urgent happening here today. The only thing that created urgency in requiring us to file that petition is that you were being asked to vote on this. And it was my hope that you would make the right decision, which is to table this motion now that there is litigation pending, which would then allow the parties a little additional time to finish up their agreement and also render the need for us to go file for a temporary restraining order or a preliminary injunction moot.
So this, the announcement of this agenda item was made on Friday. Why wasn't members of, of your staff, did they attempt to get in touch with, with our staff or to file the injunction then so we would have had time to review, to review the document?
Yes, Mayor, thank you for that. The lawyers sometimes get in the way, I hate to say that. And legal counsel for Clemmons Aviation and Midwest Corporation has been passing agreements back and forth for maybe even the last six months. It's been an extended process. We were able, working in a very collaborative, very unusual fashion, to get that final agreement down to about three pages. We did that last week. We gave them a three-page agreement last week. Unfortunately, Mr. Clemmons' father passed away. It was untimely, and the timing of that made the negotiation a little more difficult. Mr. Clemmons really worked hard and sent an agreement back that had really just one change, which they perceived to be very minor. We perceive it to be an important deal point. And in talking with them now, our agreement is we're going to walk across the street after this meeting and try to hammer out that deal point. So I think we are very, very close, Mayor. But again, I apologize, and if there's any blame for the urgency that's been created, it's, it should be on me.
Questions?
And Mayor, in response, your legal counsel has not yet had an opportunity to review the petition that was filed this morning.
Which seems to strengthen your request for, for extension by tabling the item. Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Claycomb.
Yes, thank you. I'm just a little confused about the land. So Midwest Corporate Aviation believes they have access to this land that Clemmons is requesting the contract on today?
Is it possible, City Manager, to put the slide back up that shows the parcel or the, the piece of land? And I think I can explain to you what's happened here. If you could just give us one of the aerials of the airport. If you go to the, yeah, okay. So this is the image here. So Midwest Corporate Aviation is there to the south. And they, the RFP was for this whole grassy section here, and that's considered parcel seven. There's three lots within that that are called A, B, C, and D. The RFP dealt with all of parcel seven, and Midwest Corporate Aviation's proposal was to essentially build four hangars there, 18,000 square foot each, and then some other ancillary services. Now, they have so far built two hangars there to the bottom where the grass is, but that isn't red. And the plan is to continue developing to the north of that. And Midwest Corporate Aviation's position is that all of that land that's green there has been promised to them. Now, what's happening is there's this lot C and D that the city's now trying to, or considering giving directly to Clemmons. And again, we don't have a problem with that. We think Clemmons is a good partner. He's a business partner now. We've been working with him for the last several months on other matters, and it's been a great relationship. We hope to continue that relationship. But we do think for the benefit of the city that the planning documents need to be followed, the RFP process needs to be followed, the award that was made needs to be followed, the detrimental reliance that MCA observed in this transaction needs to be followed.
So do you have a contract for C and D?
Pardon me?
Do you have a contract for parcel C and D?
We don't, councilmember. The way this works typically is that the leases continue to fold out as the property is developed. So we acted, the RFP award conversation was, took place, I believe it was a year ago, maybe even today. I think that was February 18th of last year. Midwest Corporation began developing the, the first two hangars. Those were $2 million apiece. They signed a 30-year lease. They signed the 10-year extension of the fuel farm. It was anticipated that additional leases would be signed as the development continued, and the RFP contemplated that specifically, that those would be added in the future.
Can we, thank you. Can we get some clarification from our legal counsel on that, please?
Assistant City, Deputy City Attorney Jay Hinkle's here, and we'll address that.
Welcome. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jay Hinkle, Deputy City Attorney, providing regular counsel to the Wichita Airport Authority. I'd like to bring some clarity to the issue concerning what exactly occurred in the RFP. It's the business that proposed on the RFP that MCA now wishes to claim never was created. The proposer was to have been the existing MCA leadership plus Russ Meyer, Tom Donlinger, and other individuals as well. Russ Meyer actually signed that RFP proposal as a co-proposer. Those additional parties brought management skills, additional financing, customer contacts. None of that actually took place. MCA stands here alone. When those relationships fell through, for whatever reason, we do not know, MCA scaled back its lease requests to significantly less than half the, what the proposal had promised. There was no fuel farm. There was no public restaurant. Half of the land originally to be under lease was requested. Half of the hangars to be built were to be, were to ultimately be under construction, and those of a lesser quality, ones that did not have the office space within them to be used by the pilots. The airport saw this as substantial, the substantial variance from the proposal and exercised the authority that it has available to it and rejected the proposal. There is always language in every proposal that says that the city, or in this case, the airport authority, always retains the option to reject all proposals. In this case, there was only one, and that one was rejected. However, in good faith and in recognition of MCA's status as, as a long-term tenant at the airport, airport staff began negotiations with them to develop a lease for the parcels that have been designated, shown here as parcel lots A and B of parcel seven, so they could meet the desires of MCA under their scaled-back plan. That is the lease that they signed and that. That is the lease that they signed and that came to this council. Council never saw the expanded RFP because MCA never wanted to go forward on that lease. There've been, there's been talk today also of lack of adherence to the master plan. That's a master plan from 2005, 15 years ago. Many of the assumptions that are, that are contained in that master plan never came to be. Master plans are fluid documents of general guidance, but they do not require rigid adherence. Even given that, a reasonable interpretation of the 2005 master plan would find the proposed Clemens lease to be in compliance with that plan. MCA has shown in the past, in their presentations to the Airport Advisory Council, that they interpret that plan to give them a de facto monopoly as the only aeronautical service provider at Jabara Airport. That's kind of, the monopoly status is expressly prohibited by the FAA. As you've already heard, I have not seen the lawsuit that was filed this morning. What I have seen is the proposed lawsuit that Mr. Whitmack handed out to the board members of the Airport Advisory Board, January 4 of 2019. I know that that petition had speculation. It had differing interpretations over facts that were unsupported. It did not have a viable basis to go forward as a lawsuit. I don't know what has happened, if anything, in the meantime, that would change that situation except negotiations between MCA and Clemens Aviation, to which the airport has not been Are there any further questions?
Further questions? Counsel Member Tuttle.
Thank you. So something was filed today, I understand that, and there, and now a case is being made that we should postpone because something was being filed. Can you tell me what, how does that tie in? Could we proceed? I don't know for sure the legal aspects of that.
I do not know what is in that lawsuit. It could, it could contain a language that calls for an injunction that prevents action by this board. I think if it would have contained that, Mr. Whitmack would have said so. I suppose you could ask him, but not having seen it and knowing what was contained in the documents that were proposed back in January of last year, I see no basis to delay. There was nothing contained in there that would have prevented that delay. The course of the lawsuit, depending on what basis, depending on what claims are presented, could be very extensive, and the delay could be considered by the FAA to be a denial of the request by a qualified operator to be an airport service provider, aeronautical service provider at the airport. The FAA is clear that, that actions or policies or inaction are just as, just as violative of the spirit of their regulation as actually coming down with the gavel and saying, "Your application is denied." And of course, what is at stake if, if the city is in violation of the grant assurance that the FAA, if the FAA determines that grant assurance violation exists, is that simply don't fund the airport with grants any longer. That extends initially to future grants. Potentially, that extends to grants that are in progress, and potentially that extends to clawback of past grants. Grants are millions of dollars each year, as you know, cover 90% of the operating, excuse me, 90% of the construction costs of infrastructure at the airport. So it's a, it would be a very serious issue indeed.
Sir, the, you mentioned that inaction on this or inaction to delay might be interpreted by the FAA as, as negative to the extent where it could jeopardize our grants. Is there a timeframe on that? Have we heard anything from the FAA?
Well, we heard, we had a letter from the FAA, I think it was in May of 2019, that said, "Choice to deny," this was back when he was making an application as an FBO, "a choice to deny Clemens Aviation the opportunity to operate at the airport would be a violation of grant assurance," I think it's 23, which is the one against economic nondiscrimination and exclusive, excuse me, the one against exclusive rights. We do not, because the issue of delay, effective inaction by the council based upon the request that Clemens Aviation has put forth, that was not presented to the FAA, so there's no way to determine what kind of timeframe would exist there.
So the letter in 2019 referred to the language of denial, not delay, and that didn't include a timeframe.
That's correct.
To have this matter resolved.
That's correct.
Other questions of staff? See none, thank you. Further comments from the public?
Were there going to be a reply to that briefly?
Technically, you get one bite of the apple, but there could be someone else who would then be a party, unless there is a motion to override that rule.
Am I understanding that I can speak, sir?
Of course, of course.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmembers. I'm Barbara Autry with Midwest Corporate Aviation and have been in that function for the last 40 years. I want to ask you to delay this so that Dwayne Clemens and I can have another chance to resolve this. We have actively been working on it and take a few steps forward and a few steps back, but I hopefully, or I am hopeful that we can get something together. What I'm having trouble with today is because this action has been asked to be taken prior to me having in writing that he will not be an FBO. And what I've been working for, for years, is that we stay with the master plan. Marvin Autry and I built that out there for the last 40-some years, according to the master plan. Yes, we reviewed it in 2005. There were many opportunities for new things to be said or done, and they weren't. So we have been, as far as from our point of view, I have been adhering to the master plan for that many years and extending since then. I want, and as I've told Mr. Clemens, him to be successful at Jabara. I can help him be successful at Jabara, just like we have AirShare and Lifesave and many other Part 135 people that base with us. But the fact that this was going to be voted on before I have in writing that Dwayne Clemens will not fight against me about an FBO, I could not move forward because that's what the crux of this has been since Marvin Autry's death, three years and four months ago, is I want, it has to be towards a master plan. If there's going to be a second FBO, it should be, as the master plan says, on the east side of the runway, not, not right next door to me. And when it was said that I needed to do the RFP, I respectfully submitted, and my competitor did not submit. And I was told verbatim that I won the RFP and that my competitor did not submit. And then two months later, I'm, I'm sent a letter that it's being rescinded. I am ahead of schedule on that RFP and building for that RFP. I am building from the south to the north versus the RFP said to build from the north to the south. I sat down with 20-plus of my base customers and asked them do they need, there was reference about offices and so forth for pilots. I re-interviewed the base people, and they don't want offices, and they don't want more conference rooms. We already provide that. What they wanted was aircraft storage hangars, and they didn't want the price of fuel to go up because of all this other ancillary stuff. So I am just, I'm hopeful. I mean, this has gone on for so long. Yes, I want it to be behind me. I want to work with Dwayne Clemens. We can both be successful, and he has said to me he'll be a good neighbor, and we're working on that. But I'm just, I'm asking you here today to give us another week or two to get this finalized and to extend that this not be decided today. Thank you very much.
Counsel Member Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have one quick question for you. No problem.
I'm sorry, Brandon, go ahead.
No worries. Just a quick question for you. So if the shoe was on the other foot and you were trying to apply and develop something that you wanted.
Yes.
And for two and a half years, you continued to have various hurdles.
Mm-hmm.
Would you want that delay still, or would you be ready to have that decision made?
Sir, I would have never attacked things the way that it's been attacked. I do it by the rules, and this has not been by the rules. And so I would say to delay it and let us private individuals get it on paper, how we're going to operate together, and then the city can do whatever we need to do, I guess. Does that answer your question, sir? It's been two and a half, it's been two and a half years that he's been trying to do this. I've been trying to work with him. I've, we've forced each other to work with each other, and that's a good thing.
All right.
So, so I guess, am I answering your question?
Not directly. So let me ask a different question.
Okay.
As the Airport Authority, we should kind of be referees and not really pick sides on that.
Correct.
And so would you see it as picking a side if we delayed this as you requested?
No, not at all.
Or would you see us being indifferent if we approved it because this individual has been trying for two and a half years?
Okay, and I'll speak to that because I think that goes back to the FAA. I also have decisions or opinions from the FAA. What they don't want is preferential treatment toward an individual. In no way am I ever said that we're, that we are monopoly or that I want to be a monopoly or that I'm, now they've been, they throwing around the word monopoly and exclusivity. I've never wanted that. We've known that from the beginning, that a second FBO can go on the other side, the other side of the runway. I've been working, you say he's been working at this two and a half years, as have I, to do it the correct way. So I think it's the right thing, not because of me, but for my base customers, for general aviation, for, for the city of Wichita and the east portal, which is Jabara Airport, our official reliever airport. The best thing for all of those stakeholders is to delay this and for Dwayne Clemens and Barbara Autry to hammer this out and get it signed. It was to be signed Friday by end of business day. That was what we had agreed upon. And then, yes, the misfortune of Mr. Clemens' father. And then there was President's Day yesterday, and so we did this lawsuit because of the timing, and no one would listen, put it that way. So I flew Charlie in to say, "Hey, we have to go talk one more time. Let's try to get this done the right way."
Counsel Member Tuttle.
Thank you, thank you, Barbara. My question is actually for.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, I appreciate. My question is actually for Deputy Counsel, if I could ask a quick clarifying question? So just as a statement, I truly wish that this could have been arranged between the two parties before it was brought to us. That was my assumption. But is this agreement, does it matter to this agreement if they have an agreement? And I'm not sure if I'm asking that as varnished as I probably should, but it's my understanding that this is a lease agreement between us and Clemens, and the business between these two entities, does it matter to, to our lease agreement with Clemens? Because I want to make sure we're following the spirit of, you know, the law. I want to make sure that we're also following FAA guidelines. So does it matter to us at this point what agreement they have?
There's no pre-existing control over parcel seven lots C and D. That could create, if this, that, if MCA had controlled that, was trying to arrange a sublease, then yes, their agreement would affect us. It sounds as if the agreement that they're working on deals with operational issues, and that's not something that's going to directly impact, directly impact the airport, the Airport, Wichita Airport Authority. Most likely, it relates to, we've heard attorneys from, attorney from Clemens Aviation talk about purchasing fuel from another provider. It might relate to that, for example. But without knowing what their agreement is and without, because we haven't seen it yet, and without knowing what the sticking point is, except what Ms. Autry has described as wanting to seal down FBO status for MCA, which sounds like an exclusive right, there would not be impact to the Airport Authority.
I'm going to ask a follow-up question, just for clarification, because I want to make sure that I, I truly understand the situation, okay? So it sounds like the sticking point between their contract negotiations is whether or not it's an FBO versus hangars. For us.
That's just what I have heard today.
Yes, yes. For us, does that matter in this agreement? This is land that we would be leasing. Does that matter to us?
The Airport Authority should not condone an agreement that shuts down competitive possibility of another FBO.
Okay, I, thank you. I just wanted clarification. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Claycomb.
Jay, I have another question for you. So we heard today from Clemens that this was not, that they have no intention of setting up an FBO, but could they, with this agreement that we signed today, could they set up an FBO?
There would be an option that might be possible, yes.
That'd be through the negotiation, then, of the contract, or how would, I mean, you say it would be possible.
There, there is a provision in the contract that says, it lists the allowed uses. And, and there's also another provision that lists prohibited uses. There is no listing of FBO in a prohibited use, and there is, there, and there's a, no, there's a provision that allows the allowed uses to be expanded.
Okay.
That's common, frankly, but you ask me if it's possible, then yes, it could be negotiated.
Okay, all right. And then I have, thank you, I have a couple of questions for Autry.
Thank you, Cindy.
So, thanks. It sounds like your scaled-back proposal was based on what your customers wanted.
Yes, but I debate that that was not, all right, dispute that it is not a scaled-back proposal. How that quote came around, I don't know. It is not a scaled-back proposal.
Okay.
By any stretch. I am, I am ahead and above, I am ahead of schedule, and, and, and if you want to talk money spent, I'm ahead of all that, too.
Okay.
So I have not scaled back at all.
Okay.
If we want to do, discuss that at another point, and I'd like to comment on.
Okay, well, I have, I have another question.
Go ahead, thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Would today's vote stop negotiations between you and Clemens? If we voted yes on this contract, would you just stop all negotiations?
No, I hope not.
Okay.
And they've said that we'll go. No, I hope not. And they've said that we'll go across, but I would like you, what I have trouble with, Ms. Claycomb, is it was understood that before this took, it was understood between Clemmons Aviation and Midwest Corporate Aviation, Dwayne Clemmons and Barbara Autry, that before this vote took place, in my mind, that it would be in writing that he would not be a fixed base operation. And the fact that things happened as they did and were pressed up against President's Day and then today, and that he's had reason not to sign our agreement. So I don't have reassurances that he could not take those two lots and make it into an FBO, which I've had to be very mindful of. Then, then that's why I've had to take the action, is because we have nothing in writing. And in my mind, I was given that lot set, I was awarded, not I, Midwest Corporate Aviation. It makes no difference who the factors are in Midwest Corporate Aviation. It has always been Midwest Corporate Aviation. It's its own entity. So Midwest Corporate Aviation was awarded the RFP. We are ahead of schedule with that plan. And for me to release, in my mind, I have the development of parcel seven. So I have worked with Dwayne Clemmons in saying, yes, I'll consider you developing them, you building your own hangars. What I need for that is that you're not going to try to turn them into an FBO. And I don't have that in writing yet.
Okay, thank you.
Competition is fine. It needs to be on the east side where the master plan says the second FBO would be. And there's been much time to discuss that if it's going to change. So that's what, I'm just having to take action. I hope we can go across the street and get this settled today. But I still ask that we delay this vote because I don't have in writing what we had agreed on.
Councilmember...
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I thought you were...
Go ahead, thank you.
Councilmember Clendenin.
Bob, or I think maybe our counsel, Jay, Jay Hinkle. Jay.
Lots of counselors here today.
Lots. So this contract in, I mean, I guess in simplest terms, allows part 135 operations on those parcels. It doesn't specifically name whether the restrictions and the exceptions, they don't, they don't mention FBO by name at all, correct?
That's correct. This, this lease is set up for a commercial hangar operator, which is a special classification acknowledged in the airport authority's leasing policy.
So for Mr. Clemmons to operate or decide to operate an FBO, he would need to come back and renegotiate the contract and then would have to come back to counsel? I mean, I'm, I'm, if the contract doesn't specifically mention FBO, then wanting to get us to the point to where, in this contract, to know whether or not, you know, it would have to come back to us for him to develop an FBO out there?
I don't think that point is expressed in the contract. You certainly have the authority to direct that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. So there's no further speakers on the list. I want to address a couple of things and then entertain a motion. It, it seems that when we approached this issue on Friday, that there was more of a agreement between the two parties. However, given the death of a family member in one party, it, it seems that perhaps last minute negotiations wasn't possible and that a legal injunction has been filed, which our legal staff and the counselors have not been able to see. But this is a 2.5-year process and we, needs to come to a close. My understanding is that, and our counsel has, has also said that they have not seen the lawsuit that was filed this morning. But May of 2019 was when we last heard from the FAA to get moving on this. It has not been a full year. And because of that, I would make a motion, and I, I don't know if it's, it's okay if it's not supported, but I would make a motion that we would take the item off the non-consent agenda and place it on, under, on the agenda of March 3rd, which is our next council meeting. That is not a workshop, under the business of non-consent, so that we will take final action on that day, which would give you guys two weeks. The motion does need to be seconded and if it's not, the motion will die.
I'll second.
Motion has been seconded and made. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just feel after listening to everything that we are kind of involving ourselves in a matter that those businesses should work out. As far as that contract, that really has nothing to do with what we are approving. And the risk that we take with that and FAA, I think is, is too great. Also, I think if we, if we delay, there's nothing to guarantee that this wouldn't happen again. So FBO conversations, I think, would be between those business owners. And Mr. Clemmons has, again, for two and a half years, been trying to do some business here in the city of Wichita. So I will not be supporting a delay and I would, if anyone moves, I'd support actually approving this today and then allowing those parties to deal with that themselves.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And I'm going to be a little bit repetitive to Councilmember Johnson, but I also am not going to be supportive of delaying. I feel like this process has been delayed long enough. And then with FAA guidance that we cannot have a monopoly situation, that I think eventually we're going to have to approve this lease anyway. And again, you know, we have people who want to do business in the city and we always say that we want to roll out the red carpet and not the red tape. And I think that's exactly what we're doing in this case. So I will not be supportive of a delay.
Councilmember Clendenin.
I just think, and the reason that, for my second is in light of not knowing what is in the lawsuit that was just filed this morning that we were made aware of. I think taking any action without knowing what's in the lawsuit is risky. I absolutely agree that the FAA has made it very clear to us what their desire is when it comes to our leases. I don't disagree with that at all. But in the light that a lawsuit has been filed and we've been notified and served, I really would like to know what's in that lawsuit before we take action. So hence my second of the motion today.
Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To that end, would it be possible to hear from MCA's attorney, Whitmack, on what is in that lawsuit? Is that a fair question to ask?
I don't think they can speak to the motion.
There is a motion on the, for discussion. If you have a question, you can call upon anyone to answer the question before discussion.
So it is fair to ask the counsel to reveal what was in the lawsuit?
If you'd like to ask that question.
Well, I think we've heard from a few council members up here that would like to know that. So I would like to ask Mr. Whitmack if he would approach and tell us what was in the filing.
Thank you, Councilmember Fry. I didn't hear the question.
What is in the lawsuit that you filed?
Thank you, Councilman Fry. Very briefly, to clarify the timeline that is supporting the litigation. We've thrown around the concept of this being a two and a half year dispute today and that is quite a bit misleading. This lease was only approved by the advisory board at their last meeting. This is the first time the city council is being asked to vote on this matter. Two and a half years ago, the request that was made was to develop this same land. The city decided to pursue an RFP. Midwest Corporation Aviation responded to that and began developing. Clemmons then decided to develop a different parcel at the airport, a totally different parcel. Then there was a whole conversation about that that lasted maybe a year. We only found out that Clemmons had, had new interests and was approaching the city about this original parcel seven again at the last advisory board meeting. So we're, we're learning about this interest for the first time at the last meeting. It's the first time you're looking at a vote. So the petition, the litigation that's been filed, is whether or not this has happened in concert. I said that there was a conversation among friends. And our concern is the same concern you have, is that the city is showing a preference to one operator over another. That's really the issue here. We're all talking about the same thing. We're concerned with how the FAA is going to look at this. And we believe the FAA will be concerned if the city suddenly offers another service provider an opportunity to do things that are inconsistent with the master plan, inconsistent with the public process, negotiated secretly and negotiated pursuant to terms that are not done with transparency. We believe that's going to be the FAA's concern. The letter that your counsel is talking about was very narrow and it was dealing, actually with an issue that's not even before you now. It was dealing with the issue of could they put an FBO down in the corporate division? And what the FAA said was, you know what, we're not really going to opine on that right now. All we're going to tell you is what the case law says, which is you can't show a preference. And you can't give one FBO exclusivity. So the FAA issues really aren't in front of you right now. What is in front of you right now and what the litigation is, is whether or not the airport authority, whether the director of airports knew that there was some other plan in the works at the time that they asked Midwest Corporate Aviation to invest eight million, 10 million, $14 million in new hangars, sign a 30-year lease and sign a 10-year fuel farm. And we think the evidence in that litigation is going to show that they were. We filed a number of core requests asking for that information, the emails between the city and between Clemmons Aviation, that we believe will establish the fact that these conversations were going on the entire time. Now, the responses to their core requests have been a little bit like Swiss cheese. We get an email from one person, but we don't get the response. Or we see somebody in communications down in a thread, but they're incomplete. There's meetings on one person's calendar that don't appear on another person's calendar. And some of the objection the city's given us for not giving us that information is that there are proposals that aren't subject to core requests. So we think in litigation, the evidence is going to establish the fact that the director of airports was negotiating with Clemmons Aviation, one specific project, in a secret way, at the same time they were putting Midwest Corporate Aviation through a public process and frankly destroying the value of that commitment. So that's what the litigation's about. It's super complicated. And you guys are taking a lot of evidence on it today. And that's not really your job. And I'm sorry we're asking you to be in that position to take evidence on this matter. It is complicated. It's the kind of thing that the judiciary is set up to deal with. We'll have a formal discovery process, we'll issue subpoenas, we'll see who met with who when, we'll find out what these conversations were, what the secret meetings were, and then we'll figure out if this 10, 12, 14, 16 million dollar contract that MCA signed was fraudulently induced. Hopefully, it's not going to come to that. Hopefully, these parties have a shared interest. It's shared with the city and they can work this thing out and they can work it out in the next two weeks.
Thank you. Now, that doesn't sound like it'd be done in two weeks. So everything's, because we, if my motion is to succeed, we will take action in two weeks. And will that result in another injunction or?
Mayor, I, I wish I could tell you what would happen in the crystal ball, but I don't know. I, I think these parties are both negotiating in good faith. They've been working really hard on, on reaching agreement. Again, this, this particular issue came up very, very recently. We were surprised by it, as all of you have been. And they're diligently working on getting it resolved. There've been a number of things said today that are surprising, but we're going to continue to negotiate in good faith and move forward and get this thing resolved.
Thank you, counsel.
So just to close on my motion, because it doesn't seem we have a list of anybody else who wants to speak. I, now see Brandon Johnson jumps on the list. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to add to the discussion that it, from my perspective, we are giving preferential treatment to one fixed base operator, the one that's there by delaying, by doing what this operator's asking. And Mr. Clemmons has also, it seems, compromised from whatever the initial application was to now because of this current fixed base operator. And that's just my perspective of it. So I would say, again, delaying or continuing to delay is showing preferential treatment to MCA and not allowing their own process to work out.
Well stated. So I will close on my motion and we'll see where the votes fall. My motion, please don't open a roll yet, my closing is a closing statement, is that right now there is no evidence of risk that the, within two weeks, the FAA is going to pull our grants. That has been thrown out here, but our last communication with the FAA was in May of 2019 and it did not give a timeline. The goal is to extend this to two weeks with a final action taken on this item in two weeks. It is not to table indefinitely. When people talk about the red carpet, I would like just to state that I don't think it's responsible to spend taxpayer money on litigation if we can avoid it. The people are asking, the people who are asking for delay have used the terms one to two weeks. So hopefully it would come to an agreement to save the taxpayers that money. And also, I don't think it's transparent to move forward with litigation that our counsel has yet to have a chance to review and has come to the podium and told us that they have yet to have a chance to review and the opposing counsel describes as, quote, "super complicated." So with that, I would move my motion to delay until two weeks, which will be the next regular meeting for this item to appear on the non-consent, the non-consent agenda for action to be taken on regardless of how the talks are going. It was seconded. Clerk will open the rolls. She has. Members cast their votes. With three yays to four nays, the motion does fail. Back on the original item. There are no current speakers, except for Brandon Johnson, who just popped on the list. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that we approve the agreement.
There has been a motion to approve the agreement and there has been a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? See none with that. We were asked, the clerk opens the rolls and members will cast their votes. With five yays to two nays, the motion does pass. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for Mayor Whipple, Vice Mayor Claycomb and council members Johnson, Tuttle, Clendenin and Fry to attend the NLC conference and Hill visit March 6th to the 11th, 2020, Washington, DC.
Discussion on the item. This is to pay for the National League of Cities. Those watching who might not know what NLC stands for.
I'd like to make that motion, sir.
There's been a motion to approve the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? See none. Clerk will open the rolls and members may cast their votes. With seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
Councilmembers have appointments they'd like to make? Vice Mayor Claycomb.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have an appointment of Elena Welch. She is the new youth member, if approved today, the new youth member for District Six District Advisory Board.
So last time I did this, I was told that we approved them all on one slate. Is it the vice mayor's slate that we were approved and then I also have appointments? And then I make my own? Or should I make my appointments as well and we approve them all? Madam Parliamentarian.
You can make them all in one motion?
Excellent. Or anybody like to add to these appointments? I will add, I would appoint myself to fill the, the spot on the Law Enforcement Training Center board that has been vacated by the previous mayor. I would also like to reappoint the following members to the Board of Electric Appeals. That is Brad Raglin, Mike Colain, Tony Nayler and Cole Hawkins. Are there any other appointments to boards? See none. I'll make the motion to accept all appointments.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Clerk will open the roll. Members can cast their votes. With the result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass and those appointments are set. With a result of seven yays to zero nays, the motion does pass, and those appointments are set. Now, I will move that the city council recess into executive session for 45 minutes for an employee performance appraisal pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Protecting, the executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of an identifiable individual. That meeting will be held in the conference room directly following the recess. We are now recessed. Madam Parliamentarian. Of course. Executive session will convene at 20 after 12:00. And I believe we actually need a vote on this, so. Excuse me, 20 after 11:00, my apologies. And we need to reconvene 45 minutes thereof, which gives us five minutes to make it to the conference room. Is that in order?
And may I add to the motion that the meeting will reconvene in council chambers?
In council chambers.
The meeting, this meeting will reconvene in council chambers.
There has been a motion, all in favor?
There's a, is there a second?
A second.
Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast the votes. And this is for us to go into executive session. With six yays to zero nays, the motion does pass. We're in executive session in five minutes.